Next on the agenda is new business. So we're going to be having a guest speaker this evening. Marty Coustre, and I apologize Marty if I mispronounced your last name, who is the executive director from the Housing Development Consortium. The organization is a consortium of nonprofit housing developers whose mission is to ensure that all people live with dignity dignity in a safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity. Marty will speak about these factors and constraints that impact the development of housing with an emphasis on affordable housing. So we'll lead into a staff presentation and then have Marty take the floor.
Yeah, so, well, you actually just did the introduction, so I'm not really needed here, but
Sorry Nicole.
But this is good. Marty is very respected in his field of work, and that's why I was so glad he was willing to to present this information to us. I think it'll be a good learning experience for all of us. Thank you, Marty.
Marty, thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Nicole Chair, for all your hard work. Is it possible that I could have shared screen capabilities? Whoever is currently host. And here we go. We did it. Hang with me.
No problem.
All right. If that's visible to all you, I think we're ready to go.
We are. We're good.
Okay, so I've got a few slides. I want to run through these first ones rather quickly. By the way, Nicole has these, so you don't have to worry about capturing any of this. This helps me get in the rhythm of the content, but I do want to get to the point of having what I think is some back and forth about the issues that you really want to address. So some of this will be perfunctory. So here we go. When we talk about affordable housing, basically for us, that means that whoever is either renting or buying it doesn't pay more than 30% of their income in their housing costs. And this includes a wide range of housing types from emergency shelter or permanent supportive housing, special needs housing, veterans, farm workers doesn't necessarily apply in this area. We've got a lot of folks working out there at minimum wage, zero to 30% AMI, or even above to 50%. Of course, workforce is the term we tend to use for 60 to 100%. And then ownership types of single family townhouses, condos, et cetera. And when we talk about this in terms of median area median income, we generally speak of ELI or extremely low income households, zero to 30, BLI at 30 to 50, and now at 50 to 80. I think you all know this stuff. Of course, this has become, sorry for the pixelation here, this has become a major topic in a lot of communities is the variety of housing types and the challenges of trying to increase density in communities and how there's perceptions related to density as being a bad thing. There is a movement around the country to quote unquote change traditional single family zoning to allow more duplexes, triplexes, and things like that. It hasn't happened aggressively yet, right here in in the Puget Sound, but other parts of the country, we are seeing that. The city of Kirkland actually, or Kenmore, I believe, has done some work in changing their single family zoning. What is affordable housing? Well, you know it. Some of you see it all around you in the Burian Center area. This is a shot of a project recently done near the Beacon Hill Station. These buildings here down in Auburn, Phoenix Rising is a Valley City project. You've got various other types of affordable housing. And then, of course, I wanted to show you this as well, which is something that I'm very proud of, which is a Habitat for Humanity project on MLK, right near the Columbia City Light Rail Station. And those are actually three, four, five, and six bedroom townhomes that we did while I was Director of Habitat for Humanity in the area here. So lots of different housing types. Housing that's affordable, according to our mapping, is fairly dispersed throughout King County. You will see a concentration of the zero to 30 product in the Seattle downtown area. A lot of that is permanent supportive housing and so on, but the rest of the housing that is somehow income or rent restricted tends to be fairly dispersed. You all know this as well, that when we try to achieve housing affordability for these various area median income levels, once you start getting into the lower household incomes, you need more and more government intervention and public subsidy to make it work. Once you get into this bucket of zero to 30, which is our greatest challenge here in King County, the amount of government support is really critical. Not that this is too relevant tonight, but these are fairly recent data points. Our biggest challenge in this area is we've seen this huge growth in jobs and growth in population and very little growth in overall housing supply. And that has led to this permissive context where rents, due to that lack of supply, have grown as much as 52%, whereas household income comparably has grown to 12%, which is one of the reasons why we are seeing such significant challenges of households that are extremely cost burdened or even without housing. All of that has also led to this, and this is one that I just want to make sure you have a moment to take in. In the last decade, we've had a net loss of 112,000 housing units affordable to households less than 80% AMI. That's a tough pill to swallow. It is the supply issue that has exacerbated this. Again, you'll see the units didn't necessarily go away. It's just that the rent rates on those units increased to such a point they're no longer affordable. And the other one that I really tend to look at a lot is this second to the bottom row of shaded gray, 30 to 50% area median income. You'll see that we are on a trajectory to have no naturally occurring affordable housing left in King County in that particular income range, current course and speed. Something to be really concerned about. So who provides affordable housing? The housing authorities. For folks in Burian, that is King County Housing Authority. There's been an interesting relationship with King County Housing Authority through the years of Burian's existence. Won't elaborate much on that. I think you all are aware of it. Nonprofit, social service agencies, public agencies, and then, of course, the private market are all those who are involved. How do we fund it? Well, there's capital dollars that are needed from local, state, and federal sources, and then we also need operating dollars if we're getting into affordable housing to cover the operations and maintenance. And then if it's a permanent supportive housing or other types of housing with services, we've got to come up with services dollars on the operating side as well. But it's not just a capital dollar issue. And this is a problem that we're facing as we continue to increase the production of income and rent restricted housing. We also need operating dollars. Entitlement cities and counties can use their CDBG and home dollars. There are property tax levies that City of Seattle has, City of Vancouver, City of Bellingham. And then, of course, there is the vets, seniors and human services levy, sales taxes. There is the ability, and Burian has voted do this, is to retain some of its tax that would go to the state, House Bill 1406, and pooling that with Skip, the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. And then there are new employee taxes such as that that have been passed in Seattle. Unfortunately, last year, we did not get a progressive employee tax passed at the state, which would have had something to match up to the vice chair's thoughts about being regional in our approach. King County has a TOD fund. We worked hard four years ago to finally get legislation at the state to allow the county to bond against the stadium taxes and use that for transit oriented development near high capacity transit areas. Your transit center does qualify for some of that funding. And then we have now the new skip organization in South King County that Burian helped to spawn. Some cities use their general funds, and of course, we're always looking to philanthropy to try to figure out how they can more engage. And you've heard, of course, of Microsoft contributing as one example. Now, if I'm a nonprofit and I'm trying to do income and rent restricted housing, I have to go through this brain damage of figuring out how to create the resource pool to make this happen. And so applications need to be done to the cities if they have funding to the county, to the state, and then that Washington State Housing Finance Agency, generally in that order. And it's a very laborious process with no guarantee that you will actually get funded. So the predictability is a problem. And there's a new wave of targeting or focusing a lot of the funding, especially at the state level, on various income populations such as veterans, for example, which again removes some of that predictability. The trust fund is critical, however, for each dollar put into the trust fund, we all leverage almost six additional dollars of that. And those units are required to remain affordable for 40 years. We had a dip in 2017 and 18 down to 106 million, got it back up to 175 this last biennium. Who knows what we'll be able to accomplish this time around, given the pandemic. Also, the lead funder of affordable housing in the country is not the Housing and Urban Development at the federal government, is actually the IRS, the Department of Treasury, using the low income housing tax credit program that came online in 1986. Essentially, this tax credit program allows investors to get credits for that they can apply against their taxes. As long as they purchase those credits, then it provides equity for the construction. And there's two types. The 9% program, which is more competitive, and the 4% program, which is more automatic. The challenge with the 4% program the last three years is it has not had enough resources match up to it. In the bond program, there's a bond cap that happens that ties into that 4% program. And the last round, we had about $250 million to give away in the state of Washington through that program. And there was a billion dollars in requests. So there was 2,300 units, I figured, in King County that were ready to go into production that did not get funded the last round. And then, of course, the money that goes into that investment comes from CRA investors. These are the banks, insurance companies, and other big companies. And there are syndicators that pool some of that investment versus direct investors that exist out there. And we're not going to go deep into ITech tonight. But here's the real kicker. We can't produce affordable housing without all these subsidies. And on the development side, you know, really, what happens is a conventional real estate market looks at their total project cost equalling their debt and their owner equity. And the debt gets paid off by the rental income. So this is really important as you look at rent increases now in South King County have been the most significant in the last three years. It does mean that it's possible now that things will start to pencil better for the private market. And then you have equity recaptured by the owner through their cash flow, the appreciation in the value, and the sale of the asset. And so this is one of the reasons why there's a challenge in the market rate development, the for profit development market versus the nonprofit is this business of selling that asset in a year or within seven years, which is not something that the nonprofit affordable developers do. They tend to build product that is designed to last 50 to 100 years, knowing that they're constantly holding on to it and maintaining it, hopefully not recapitalizing it every 10 to 15 years. And so the reduced rents for people of lower incomes means there's little or no debt that can happen. And there's no owner equity or resale, as I mentioned. So these are the reasons why the challenge of producing nonprofit affordable housing just anywhere at scale is a real challenge for us to see happen. Now, I wanted to share this with you. I don't know if you've seen this or not, but last year, we offered RFP out to South King County cities with some support from our friends at Union Bank and two of our members, SMR Architects and Beacon Development. And Burian won that RFP to take a look at the transit center of property next to the parking garage there, which is for many of us in the Puget Sound, one heck of a nice flat piece of land, I'll say. And we were trying to figure out if it was conceivable for development to take place there. And so this is just a summary of that. And Nicole has the entire package of information that came out of this. Tara had it on file as well. But in summary, if we wanted to do a four story or five story building there, 92 or 123 units, you see the total cost, the amount of equity we could get out of the low income housing tax credit program, the permanent debt that would be applicable to that thing, and then the gap. And here lies the problem. If this project was actually located or the site was within a qualified census tract that HUD designates, it could get a basis boost and it would be feasible without needing to address this gap question. But right now, we're left with this gap. If we were in Seattle, hey, no problem. We have a housing levy. Let's tap the housing levy and we'll take out that gap. If we're on the east side, Arch might be able to take out that gap with their capital fund or their trust fund. But right now in South King County, we're sitting here scratching our heads saying, great project. Where are we going to find that kind of gap money? So these are some of the harsh realities of how the entire structure of funding works against the grain of ability to do things in that way. So I just pulled this down this morning. This is the 2021 shading for the qualified census tracts, according to HUD. And as you can see, it's pretty unfortunate that when you look at the new urban center plan, what are we actually dealing with in terms of the feasibility of getting that basis boost for using the ITech program? I should say, though, that the 9% program, not the 4%, the 9% program does have the ability to get a basis boost of 30%. So it would be more feasible. But the other challenge related to that, though, is that King County and the commission and all the public funders have really agreed that 0 to 30% AMI housing is the most important thing we can do with our 9% program. And so on any given year in King County, we're likely to get four or five 9% deals. And two or three of those will go in the city of Seattle because they can match it with their their housing levy. They're trying to figure out where can we cite others? And they're tying this also, though, in the 0 to 32, a hope and aspiration that we can create permanent supportive housing with that 9% money. And so is a community needing and wanting to have permanent supportive housing located in more of an urban center area like this? Or does a community even have a welcome mat out for a 9% permanent supportive housing project? So those are some of the challenges that you face as you try to figure out how to tap those resources. So I'm going to stop here pretty soon so we can ask some questions, but some key ingredients in my mind, and we have lots of different presentations on all these different tools. There's a panoply of tools, and Burian has done a lot of work of late, especially around tenant protections and so on. But we need to have adequate resources. And as you can see, without local matching dollars or something to take out the gap, it makes it that much harder. There's got to be land available, and sometimes discounted donated surplus land can be a way. But even this project that we showed you earlier, I believe there was no land cost figured into that particular effort. There's a lot we can do in zoning to either provide incentives, density bonuses, incentive zoning programs. Anything we can do to increase density might give developers, whether for or nonprofit, the ability to gather more rent off that project. And there's also the ability to impose requirements, mandatory inclusionary zoning, things of that nature. Multi-family tax exemption program is used in some communities fairly effectively. We continue to wrestle with the state in terms of some alignment there on renewing or expanding that program. But MFT is something that a lot of communities are looking at for developers to actually add some affordable units as an incentive structure. Certainly working on parking requirements, tenant protections are key policy areas that can help. What are we doing around fees? Can the city afford to reduce its impact in utility fees, utility hookups, waivers on that? The welcome mat piece, all I say there is most of the nonprofit affordable housing developers are so overwrought, just trying to get through getting their applications done and getting their projects built, that they don't need to fight with neighborhoods and residents in communities or city hall for that matter. Recently, down in Auburn, the development down there of 500 units of affordable housing, that's a 4% tax credit deal being done by inland development. There was over two years' worth of permitting efforts that had to take place to get that project to happen. The city and inland got their heads together and they worked it out in six months. Got all of the whole mess of permitting type actions that had to take place. They pulled it off in six months. The development is well underway and will probably be ready for occupancy early next year. Just another example of, you know, sort of what can a city do? And then the question I put out here, because I don't yet know enough about this, but if you were to talk to a larger developer about doing something comprehensive, could you tap into their desire to reduce their capital gains taxes and utilize the opportunity zone program to really produce something at scale? So that's just a quick overview. What can Burian do? That's where I'll leave it right here. And hopefully at least we can start seeing if I can help you at all think through some next steps.
Thanks very much, Marty. Appreciate it. Commissioners, open it up to you for questions, comments. Mr. Kay.
Hi, Marty. Thank you so much for being here and giving this presentation. I have a lot of thoughts about all of this, and I've had a lot of thoughts about this. We've had a lot of discussions about affordable housing. And I think that zero to 30 AMI that we're looking at is only going to grow. And it's going to grow because we're seeing such a huge disparity in income, wealth growth, right? So my question to you is, in particular, the low income housing tax credit from the Fed, is that only for apartments? Because it seems to me like whenever we're talking about affordable housing, we're only talking about apartments. We're not talking about ways for people to gain wealth or gain equity. We're only talking about ways to house people. And that really concerns me that that's the way that we talk about affordable housing, apartments. And so what we're doing is we're basically creating a system in which we are keeping people poor by not giving them any way to build wealth. And this has been going on for a long time in government. And so I'm really concerned about the way that we're talking about affordable housing. I think we can, we need to, we need to shift the focus and reframe it. And I think the city of Burian, I would really like to see us do that reframe. And when we talk about affordable housing, we talk about building wealth for Burian residents. So that's my question to you is, is that low income housing tax credit really only for apartments? Or could that be something that is built condo, for instance, a condo building instead?
Yeah, good questions and really good comments. I don't know if you know much about my background, but I dedicated 24 years of my life to Habitat for Humanity work nationally, globally, and locally. So a wholehearted believer in the potential of ownership as a wealth creation tool. The low income housing tax credit program as it's constructed does not work for homeownership projects. I did do a project in in King County using the New Market Tax Credit Program, which is even a more complicated program. And most of the nonprofit ownership groups probably shy away from the complexity of that effort because it is just an unimaginable abyss of challenges to work through. But aside from that, let's talk about the potential of homeownership as a strategy. It's likely going to have to be a condo, at least some type of multi-family structure. We know that we cannot get density and scale if we start to continue to perpetuate the single family detached model, right? You got ADUs has an infill strategy, but the scale of those is not going to get us what we need either. So we're looking at condos. We worked hard. I was part of a small group of folks that actually did a study at the university five years ago now. And we got some condo reform at the state done. Washington State, unbeknownst to most people, is one of the worst states in the nation in terms of how it whiplashed the legal environment and made it almost impossible. Even our nonprofit group, Homesite, had to build $100,000 worth of litigation funds into a project before they even started on it, knowing they were going to end up in litigation on the building. So we've got some success in condo reform. Now, let me just talk candidly about the implications, though, of trying to do ownership. In order to make it work, we really need to figure out how we can accept buildings that aren't going to cost as much on land that is going to be inexpensive because that total sale price of a unit has to be slow enough to make it work. We can get down payment assistance, but we need to increase the availability of down payment assistance in order to make things work for home households. And the biggest challenge I faced, like at High Point, at Rainier Vista, and Green Bridge and other places, and those Hope Six developments in King County, was the Habitat buyers that we were working with. Their amount of their payments for their homeowner dues and other expenses far exceeded the principal. So the challenge that we have when you do these condos is how do you make sure that, you know, things like homeowner dues and others don't impinge? So it's not an easy fix, but land trusts, community land trusts, shared equity models like Habitat, and looking at co-ops are ways in which we can try to expand the opportunities for homeownership. And it's a commendable thing to do. We will not overcome the institutional and structural racism issues that we have in this country if we do not right the wrongs of redlining and all the other things we've done for generations to prohibit people of color from owning homes. And that's a hard reality, but it is a reality.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Marty for putting this together here. I think this is the first time I've seen a real, like, sort of model comparing affordable housing and what it takes to sustain that versus, you know, sort of the the version of, I call it flipping homes to make cash here. So that is, that is very helpful. I'm curious, and maybe this is just, I wanted to get your thoughts on with with COVID. If if you have seen maybe a shift away, people is looking to move away from city centers and densification? If you think that'll have any adverse effects on some of the models projections that you're seeing?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's early to tell yet, but I do think that at least as the the movement we were seeing for this attractiveness of a city center for we were seeing for this attractiveness of a city center for young tech workers, for example, if in fact we continue to prove that the tech sector can function better or effectively and continue to make profits without needing offices, I think you're going to see a whole lot more live-work kinds of environments. I don't know that that changes, though, the desire for people, once we're past the pandemic, to go outside of their, their home and be able to walk around and have a livable context. So at least at this point, that hasn't borne out. But I think we're, we're early in terms of really understanding the full dynamics of this. And to your point on the pandemic, the one thing that we should all be afraid of is once the eviction and foreclosure moratoriums are lifted, you're going to see more people struggling to have housing security. And you're going to see a lot of small mom-and-pop landlords, if they're not made whole, also putting their market, their product out there on the market and speculative investors hovering over, ready to buy it. So for whatever little naturally occurring affordable housing you may have left in the area, you may lose more of it. Not to be negative, but just so that we're awake and alert.
Yeah. Very good point. Other questions? Mr.?
Yes, let me add my voice to saying thank you for the presentation. That was wonderful. We had a panel discussion, the city did, I should say, with some for-profit developers who were expressing their opinions about what the city needed to do to get them to come and develop properties. And one of the comments they made was, we should eliminate all setbacks, eliminate all parking requirements, eliminate all entertainment and public spaces in their properties to maximize the number of units that are shoved into those properties. And another comment they had was, do not do any low-income housing at all because it brought crime. And in your experience, is what the for-profit developers were saying is that their mindset of most for-profit developers? And does it bring crime? I can't picture it myself, but I believe you're the expert, so enlighten us.
Well, let me just say this. Maybe eight years ago, we were at the police training center now between, down near Normandy Park, having a conversation about daytime crime happening in, in the area here. And somebody stood up, one of the police officers, and said, well, the biggest problem we have is all the affordable housing in the area is attracting people that are doing this. And I, of course, didn't let that go. I stood up and interrupted the meeting and I said, I'd like to see the data source that confirms that. So that gives you just an impression of how I feel about that comment. Not all for-profit developers are in the same strain. There are six or seven that are members of the Housing Development Consortium, GMD, Bariantos Ryan, Spectrum, and a number of others who are what I would call more missionally aligned than some for-profit developers. Now, we wrestle with this question of if, if it's all about units and we've lost 112,000, in order to flip it around, we need 44,000 every five years until 2040 to get to 244,000 units just to catch up here in King County. It means we need all hands on deck. But we do think there have to be some values around what we call housing. And to totally eliminate some of the amenities that go to the heart of livability, to not, you know, and I know they don't want affordable, some folks do not want affordable units embedded in their buildings for a variety of reasons. In Seattle, it took us 20 years to get mandatory inclusionary zoning passed there. It was acrimony and fighting up until the very end. It sometimes is the only way you can make it happen. I'd rather have a voluntary incentive program than a mandatory program. But I think there are for-profit developers who I would continue to court and have conversations with if I were you, who are desirous of building community. They do not necessarily come with the same intentional motivation as the nonprofits, but to me, it's a give and take of both directions. Does it cause crime? Is there anything that tells us that low-income people are more apt to be criminals? No. I, I think that that's sort of, well, I'm not going to say anymore on that topic.
I appreciate your candor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcia, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, no, I wanted to also thank Marty. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for how much you've given back to all our communities through your years at Habitat for Humanities. Having said that, we recently had a meeting where there is a project in partnership with Habitat for Humanities that's going to be potentially done here in Burian. It's going to add 43 multifamily homes or a little over 40. So I'd like to see potentially a recommendation or for us to, since we just made a request to change some verbiage in part of our comprehensive plan, for us to rewrite that statement and include the type of suggested vehicles that Marty just mentioned, land trust, community. Where were those three? I think you mentioned three or four.
And shared equity, and I would put the Habitat model in the shared equity bucket, yeah.
Yeah, I think we really need to, just like, like you said, I mean, we have a big task ahead of us. And I think we should pivot to have that be the goal for us to encourage more of these properties. Because, you know, it took a landowner to, in essence, you know, donate this. I don't know the full details, but I know someone had to, to make a concession or investment into the community. So I think the more often that we mention, and like Commissioner K said, make Burian a leader in trying to be creative and, and not always think of the bad properties that are hard to develop as the properties that can become affordable. But look at what we have potentially with the site that the city owns. That's a hotel project that did not come to fruition, that's in the downtown core. But I just want us to potentially just be more proactive about, especially right now that we're going to be reviewing our affordable housing and a housing study that's about to get done, to really just push forward. Because, you know, it took 20 years for the inclusionary zoning. I don't want 20 more years before Burian has another project like the Habitat for Humanity. So thank you for that. And I don't know if that was a recommendation or just a comment, I guess it's a comment, but I think we really need to keep these discussions, so thank you.
Yeah, as usual, Commissioners are saying this much better than I could have put into words. Marty, I have a question for you. So as Commissioner Garcia had mentioned, you know, we're, we partnered up and made the recommendation to council and they moved forward the project with Habitat, which we're very excited about. And it's a part of our, our work that we've been doing around demonstration projects focused on these very issues. And I think what we found in that discussion of Habitat being the first one who came to us is, you know, that, that property and a little bit of what you spoke to and what Commissioner Garcia just spoke to as well is that it's in a position where it's, it's near the flight path. It's near 509. It's right next to a highway in particular matter. And, you know, all these issues of environmental justice are very big. And I think collective issues that we all brought up on our last meeting was concern that we might have had some unintended consequences with the demonstration project of knowing that we need somebody who's willing to give up land or give it at a discount, that we might get into positions where that is our, that's our option, basically. And, and so I'd love your thoughts on, as we evaluate that, that project moving forward, as we work with potential others to make sure they know about it or, or work with them when they're proposing, are there things we should be keeping in mind? Are there other unintended consequences we should be thinking about? Or how can we work to make sure we address those issues?
Yeah, well, and, and all of this gets to be thorny, right? I mean, and I can tell you over the years of, of, of doing the Habitat for Humanity work, the question of a piece of land, I mean, land was one of the most valuable commodities, right? Because ye who controls it gets to say who lives there. And so you, you really have to figure out how you can get as much site control as possible in order to succeed. Now, what always you struggle with is, do you feel like you're taking table scraps or shards or properties that are less desirable? Or you're moving or asking lower-income households to live in second-class neighborhoods? I don't know the specifics of the site enough to say that, you know, other than I understand the flight path issues and I understand the 509 issues. But there are a number of other residents, though, along that same corridor. What I will say is, we run a program, you can find it off our website, called our exemplary buildings program. And I had the same thing at the North Lot near the Beacon Hill Tower with one of our partners, Skippeta, is doing a massive 200-some-unit multifamily building there. And we're putting balanced ventilation in that building and a whole number of other features simply to respect the air quality of the area, the noise of the area and, and all of that. So very similar dynamics, but building the buildings to be respectful, at least to resident health, which is things that in today's technology and knowledge we can do. It does cost a little more in some cases, but not excessively. But I do think that, you know, the hardest part that you as commissioners have is how can you get in front of, with the city staff, this question of really mapping out site control in a more proactive way? And, and trying to figure out how you can be of assistance to the development community? Because right now, it's about the development community actually competing with itself in all ways, shapes or form to get their hands on dirt and doing it where there's money. I mean, this is the crass thing about most of my nonprofit members is they say, Marty, don't ask me to, to do things strategically. We just follow the money. We develop where there's money, or at least where there's money and a welcome mat. So if I've got a community that, you know, is so anti-nonprofit or affordable housing and the, the group ends, spends up months and months fighting with the neighborhoods, it's not worth their time and energy. They don't have that. They're just not staffed to that kind of level. So I, I guess I'm going around the horn with you, Chair, but I think, you know, the real issue here is how do you take a look at that development and evaluate it? And say, from an equity standpoint, from an environmental justice standpoint, and from our commitment to ownership as an alternative to rental? I mean, do an after, after-action review and find out who actually got to live there? You know, and buy those homes. Was it nearby residents? Have, has there been any conversation about, you know, proactive marketing strategies to make sure local residents who are currently in rental buildings can actually get a shot at applying for those units? Can we even look at a community preference sort of guideline that you guys could implement in Burian that says, we want to provide cover to Habitat in as much as fair housing acts, fair housing laws allow to ensure that community residents are the ones that are going to be buying those units? These are the kinds of things that I would be trying to design and pay attention to on that project.
Thank you. Very helpful. Any other questions? I have another one, but I don't want to dominate.
Yeah, I have another one, too. I was to make sure all the Commissioners have had a chance to, to ask their questions.
Mr. Hauser, I think is the only one. I don't know if you have one, but okay, he's good for now. So Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
Okay, great. Marty, quick question. I guess, do you think just sort of rent controls could be a good lever? I mean, obviously, I mean, in your presentation, you showed us rising rent costs. Do you think implementation of policies around that could be helpful to, to help sort of protect renters and keep things at affordable levels for longer periods of time?
I, here's my personal philosophy. Our organization has not taken a stance on rent control. First of all, we, of course, haven't eliminated the preemption at the state. So it's really not permissible in Washington State. But I'm part of a group that I co-lead called Seattle for Everyone, which has private developers, the Chamber DSA and others with us, as well as housing advocates and urbanists. And I think we're in agreement at that table that a rent, anti-rent gouging effort or anti-rent gouging policy is something we can get universal agreement on. I think if you try to go to traditional full-on rent control, you're going to fight with so many elements. And I'm not sure, there's contradictory evidence out there about its effectiveness. Generally speaking, it helps the people who are already in units, being able to stay in those units at an affordable rate. But it exacerbates and makes it even more impossible for others to gain access to a unit because it accelerates rent increases and costs. And once those costs go up, the rents have to go up. And so, so I personally have not embraced full-on rent control, but I think that some form of rent stabilization and anti-rent gouging efforts are something that's definitely required so that we don't have some of these situations happening. But here's the real heart of the matter. We have got to figure out how to get our society to embrace the fact that we just have to produce a whole bunch more housing. You go back to those slides I was showing you. The real reason why rents are allowed to go up at the rate they are is simply because of the lack of supply.
Right, supply and demand.
Yeah, yeah.
Great question. Any others? I have one more, Marty. So, you know, in the, in the presentation, you showed and said that mapped-out project here, had it been on in Seattle, they could have tapped their levy. Had it been on the east side, the developmental organizations could have stepped in there. South King County, we're just getting together on this. And I think our feeling like we've been in a forgotten state here or don't have the ability to compete against established resources on the east side or in downtown Seattle or in Seattle proper. How do we, what tools can we use within the housing assessment that's coming up? You know, what should we look for in that? What should we take from that? And how can we, as a commission, make sure that we're clear? And I think I can safely convey a majority of the commission saying that the welcome mat is out or we want it to be or we're placing it down. How can we make sure it's clear and we got the, the best signal up that the welcome mat's out?
Yeah, this is a very good point. I think continuing to have learning lunches or opportunities with various developers. And I certainly continue to steer our people to be talking with the city officials and your planning staff and others. I spent 10 years here in this area working to get skip off the ground. I don't know how many people know that. I wholeheartedly believe that South King County will not be able to be competitive in the world as we currently see the funding. And by the way, doing some work in Pierce County, trying to help the electeds there think about some kind of collaborative. And the distribution of tax credit, 4% tax credit money is not evenly distributed around the state by population. King County tends to get a proportional, much more bigger proportional share of it because we can garner those matching resources. South King County has always been at a disadvantage in King County because there hasn't been a unified approach. And there's not as much resource capability to pull together. But Burian has led the effort. You should be proud of your, your staff and leadership saying, we're going to take our 1406 money and pool it and skip. A big first step. Burian did not, or as far as I know, has not gone ahead. Buren did not, or as far as I know, has not gone ahead and, and decided to enact its own 1591 tenth of 1% sales tax that King County just enacted yesterday. So those funds, I'm hoping, will also be available through Skip. At least I'd sure like to see a South King County proportional share available. So there are tools like that, and, and there is some effort with philanthropist I'm not going to mention tonight at looking at how to boost getting a strong capital fund that Skip put together. So those are things that I wholeheartedly believe we all need to be working on is to attract philanthropy and others to say, we have to reinvest for the sake of equity and all the disproportionality that South King County has bear, has borne. We've got to invest resources in South King County. And you're right, you need to put out the welcome mat because when we do get the resources together, there have to be cities that will raise their hand and say, we're willing, we're open. We want to do our part as a regional entity. And you have so much to offer, you know? The transit center, the proximity to the city, everything else that's good about Buren.
I agree. At least I agree. Chairman Garcia, or Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, thanks. On that note, we would love to invite you to share with your consortium, especially of developers, that we still have room in our demonstration project. There's room for other projects. We only have that one with Habitat for Humanity. So please do share with folks that we would love to have them look at projects in Buren. And then the other item is, recently, I think today, or maybe yesterday, yesterday, the county passed a tax increase for, in essence, affordable housing, that zero to 30% for our population that's experiencing homelessness. Is there anything that Buren should be aware of for that tax increase? How we can potentially keep our welcome mat open for projects? And how would that, this might be a really long, maybe a next visit discussion, but would love to get your thoughts on how that would impact the unincorporated area north of us, White Center? And meaning, I know that the county has a lot of focus to potentially do some investments in Skyway and White Center. It just seems like it's a really good time for us to be proactive about what the county is doing to our neighbors to the north as, as potentially opportunities for us to support just growth in housing and affordable housing. And I don't know how that may tie potentially to recent discussions by council on looking at annexation as well.
Yeah, that annexation conversation, how many years has that been going on? So we sort of thought Mayor Ed Murray in Seattle might get it done with White Center, at least at one point, and Renton with Skyway. But that's, that's a bouncing back and forth. So let me just quickly say, House Bill 1590 is the, allowed councils to councilmanically approve that one tenth, that 1% sales tax that we got done three years ago now, 2263. And King County was not going to enact the tax up until maybe a month ago. Executive Constantine changed his mind. And the reason they changed their mind is they've had such good health outcome reports out of a U-Dub study on people who are experiencing homelessness being moved immediately into hotels and motels that they bought up from the pandemic. And that study shows that a night of sleep and a little privacy can really translate into health, right? So the initiative now is called Health is Housing, or Housing is Health. And the goal of the county is to use that funding to enact as much permanent supportive housing as we can throughout the county, which has been part of the Third Door Coalition and other movements. And so it's very specifically targeting permanent supportive housing. Some cities are not excited about PSH. They would prefer to be able to be more flexible in the zero to 30 range, but not have permanent supportive housing. I personally believe we need to cite permanent supportive housing throughout the county because we have people experiencing homelessness who are going to need that level of care in every community. So you can put out the welcome mat, certainly with the county. You don't have a hotel or motel, though, that's distressed, that I'm aware of, that could be bought up. But you may have a piece of land somewhere that, or something in partnership with White Center, a place that, you know, you could do some kind of joint development project. But certainly to be aware of that. There has been a last-minute ruffle. There are six cities that went ahead trying to block the county from having this funding to use in their cities by enacting their own tax. Unfortunately, that means there's less overall money because the county is intending to bond against that, that tax and create a fairly large pool, $400 million, which is unheard of for us. So we're trying to work behind the scenes with those cities and figure out if we can get the county to agree to apportion that tax out to Arch on the east side and Skip on South King County. So the Skip cities would actually have some say in how they would utilize that funding. Stay tuned for all of that political fun. But at any rate, you're right on, and you're doing great work. I don't want to keep you any longer tonight, but we are around, especially as you get into your housing element work, happy to offer whatever support we can there. And yeah, if we want to do a learn-it lunch down the road with our members on your demonstration initiative, you know, happy to pull that together with staff as well.
Marty, I think that'd be a great idea. And thank you so much for your time this evening. It's been a valuable discussion. And you came in at the right time to help us as we're starting to think about some of these issues. So thank you for giving up your evening to spend some time with us. We really appreciate it.
Oh, no problem. I learned from all of you, and I commend you for your difficult and hard work. Hang in there.
Thank you. You do the same. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Thank you, Seth.